We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Mayor Holland.
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
I am also here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Please bow your heads with me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and to brainstorm and talk and debate and vote and everything else that is encompassing that for the potential betterment of our town, for the potential betterment of our community, for the potential betterment of everything that we know and believe is the heart, soul of Emerald Isle. May we not take one day or breath for granted, and may everything we do be in your service, and that you bless us with another day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face our flag, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number five will be our public comment. There was or is a sign up sheet on the table by the door. If you signed up, we'll call your name in order. If you missed it or didn't know it was there, don't worry. If you raise your hand at the end of it, we'll make sure you're heard. As always, I'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes in respect of anybody else that might want to speak after you. At the end of your three minutes, I'll give you a little thank you. I'm not going to cut you off mid-sentence, but please finish your thought and be respectful to the speakers that are coming behind you. So, that being said, Madam Clerk.
Charles Mithlin?
Yes, I'll start as number two, I guess. I'm sure of the two mayors.
Sir, if you would, please.
I'm here.
I could do that?
With the mic there, just so everyone at home can, listening can hear you, sir. Thank you. And one, one more thing before you start, sir, so I don't interrupt your time. When you're done, if you would, just set the mic down. Don't turn it off. That thing is finicky. It's a pain in the you-know-what. Yes, sir. Hold it up nice and close so everyone at home can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, mayors, and thank you commissioners, townsfolk. I'm here, just a quick question, kind of a concern. The community center and mostly the courts, the pickleball courts, tennis courts, we have a lot of visitors, love the place, a lot of folks coming in to play open play. The sign up, the charging, those of us who are members, those of us town folk, were paying. And there may be a lot of people that either don't know, there's really no signage, there's nothing out there that would indicate, especially after hours, or forget to sign in. And so I'm just wondering if the town, at the council, the center, is going to look into some way to regulate those people actually using, actually have paid. It just puts money in the coffers, helps the community, helps the center, helps the rest of us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir, I'll add, um, you did it. Chief, get, chief, get him out of here. All jokes aside, though, I encourage you to reach out to our, thank you for your comments. I encourage you to reach out to our Parks Director Candace Dooley. I know we've had a lot of discussion about pickleball scheduling, all that.
There's a medium somewhere.
And I appreciate you being here, sir. Thank you. Madam Clerk, who's next?
You have to hit it really hard.
Hear what I have to say.
Here it is.
Mayor Holland, Commissioners, I just wanted to offer this comment, that this is one of the issues that I'll be looking at in the coming weeks and months with Parks Direct Director Candace Dooley and also some of the representatives of the pickleball community as well. So, we're, we're working on that issue, and I'll come back to you at the appropriate time with some recommendations.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, it's a tough thing. Pickleball has exploded would be an understatement, and we're a small town, small courts and limited real estate, but hopefully we can all work together for a resolution that will appease everybody.
Natasha Fogel.
She don't need a microphone.
Ah, she swallowed one at birth, just like I did. Come on up, for formality's sake.
That was number three. That's why I'm not number one.
Good evening, young lady.
Is this working? Okay.
Yeah.
So Natasha Fogel, 305 Boganlet Drive is where I reside. So I want to start thanking our Commissioners, Mayor, Town Manager, along with everyone else who's aided in the flagpole. So, that's number 15 on the agenda today. So I'm the President of Emerald Isle for Veterans. We love our community, we love our country. With that said, we host a lot of events, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Veterans Day, where people show up, they honor their loved ones, we gather together, EI for Veterans, we place the flags around the roundabout for these walks, and for participants, they add their flags during these events as well. Some of them have names written on them, things like that. So, we were always wondering, why don't we have a flag there? We have a small flag when you're crossing over the bridge. And with the town's help, everyone's support, we have received a very large donation from a gentleman named John Trout. That donation will cover the flagpole. And with Frank being our Town Manager, we had a meeting, and he has been on board, and he has been working diligently, and so he's got some plans for it, and hopefully all of you will support the flagpole coming in and support us while we do our walks and everything. And that's about it. Oh, we also have the meet and greets coming up. If anybody needs any flyers, I have those as well. And Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament, we have three boats in there with veterans, so I think we're up to 31 veterans that will be fishing, and all of that is covered by sponsors, and whatever proceeds we get goes straight back into our local community. Thanks, have a great evening.
Thanks for being here.
Irv Monclova.
You're the reason you sat closest to the podium, sir.
First, Lydia, will you stand up for me?
I am standing.
Irv. Irv, if you would, hold that mic up for the people at home, please, sir.
I can speak now, if not.
Yes, sir.
Lydia, stand up.
I stood.
This lady, single-handedly handled the committee that made the lights at Christmas to be happening this particular day, first day of Thanksgiving, with 78, 75 of the long poles and 67 of the short poles. I think we should give her a big hand. A challenge to the town leadership was missing in what we did is getting the owners of businesses to put decorations in their streets, in their buildings. Now, that's above our pay grade and her pay grade, but it's not above you guys. So I think the challenge is, let's do it, and then complete this, the circle, and make that a big attraction to everybody coming in here during the slow season of business. I can see people that were fan donators sitting out there. Thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone that we missed, or what in the way of the sign up sheet, anyone have a public comment they'd like to add? All right, moving on from public comment, excuse me. Item six, we heard you, the follow-up to prior month's public comments. There should be some printed copies on the table by the door. If there're not, please let us know, and either stop by or reach out to the admin office, and we'll make sure you get those. Item number seven would be to identify any conflict of interest on tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, I'll let you take it from here.
All right. Any conflict of interest, Mayor Holland?
I have none.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
I have none.
Commissioner Brownlow.
No conflict.
Commissioner Sanderson.
I have none.
Commissioner Sawyer.
No conflict.
Commissioner Wooton.
No conflict.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Item number eight would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt? Some of Commissioner Sawyer with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, 5-0. Thank you. Item number nine, we have an, uh, some introduction of, introduction and recognition of new employees. Mr. Rush and Chief Mathias, you're up.
Yeah, Mayor Holland, Commissioners, members of the public, John, come on up to the podium, please. It's my pleasure to introduce all of you to John Neville. John is our new planning director. He started work yesterday for the town, and thankfully he came back for day two today. So, hopefully he'll be back for day three. He'll fit right in. But really pleased to have John join our team. We went through an extensive selection process earlier this summer. John clearly rose to the top of that process. John previously served in similar roles for the town of Newport, and also for the Pueblo West Metropolitan District, which is a local government outside of Pueblo, Colorado. John is going to handle all of the planning and development services for the town. One of the things that came through loud and clear in my conversations with John and in the references, both known and unknown, that I checked on John, was just his excellent customer service. And that's a high priority for me, for all of our town services, but especially for the, the planning and development regulation services. So, really pleased to have John bring in that customer service ethic to the town. John also has law enforcement background, some previous military service. He is a Renaissance man of all, of some sorts. He had, is an author, and also participates in adult track and field events as well. So, well-rounded individual, just really glad to have him here working for the town. So, John, welcome.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Neville, thank you and welcome. Make sure your chin strap's on really, really tight, but I'm glad you're here, sir.
Good afternoon, or good evening, should I say. Sorry, I was unable to attend the August meeting. However, the, we were blessed to have the three new hires with the Emerald Isle Fire Department to help staff at Emerald Isle Medic Three Unit down at our Coast Guard Station here on Coast Guard Road. But we were fortunate enough to have three individuals who had been working here already on a part-time basis, and able to get them on our team fairly quickly. So, I wanted to introduce them tonight. First be Tyler Howard. Can let them speak a little bit on their own.
Thanks, Chief. My name's Tyler Howard. Like I said, I came on part-time in March, came on full-time in July. Firefighter EMT, did my EMT in Fire Academy last year. I've been married for about five and a half years now, got two young daughters, four-year-old and two-year-old, but looking forward to continued training, continued education, and growing as a firefighter and EMT here at, for the town of Emerald Isle.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Next one is Ryan Taylor. I'll have him come up. Ryan's got a little bit of backstory here. I remember when he came in the door in, I believe it was 2017, and 16, sorry, he's going to correct me, but asking if we were hiring anybody that was able to swim in the ocean, and so he's been around since then.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. So, I'm Ryan Taylor. Like I said, I actually got my first gig here in 2016 as a lifeguard when I was in college, and I'm ordered a couple of years during the summers when I was in school, and still came back on the weekends after I graduated. I decided I wanted to get into the fire service about two years ago, did my academy, got my paramedic certification in April. I was working up in Atlantic Beach for a little while, and Chief Mathias called and said that you guys were having an opening down here, it was an opportunity I couldn't turn down. So, it's good to be back.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome back.
And the last engineer, firefighter engineer, is Chris Kaiser. Chris Kaiser, if you recall, a couple of years back, he's unfortunately unable to be here tonight, but he was with us up until, I believe, February of 2023, him and his wife, and family moved to Hawaii. Great chance, great opportunity. Some unfortunate health things came up with their son, Daelen, and so that's why that he's currently not here. He's up in Chapel Hill with their son, Daelen, battling, his son's battling leukemia, so unfortunately not able to be here, but great to have him back. Again, avid waterman, great for the ocean rescue aspect, great on the fires side, and also has a lot of experience in the EMS field.
And I know that Chris, Joni, and Kalen, they, we had an event for him, or the town had an event for him, I should say, to raise money for, you know, bone marrow, bone marrow donors, bone marrow awareness, and thoughts and prayers go out to them at night. Hope everything is going okay, and that he makes a speedy and full recovery, too.
I think everything right now is on the positive aspect of it, so fingers crossed it keeps going that direction.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, Noddy, Chief Panzarella, I'll see you right there, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to come and share some good news on behalf of the Police Department with you. Tonight, we want to recognize Master Sergeant Clayton Pittman. Excuse me. As you might recall, three to four board meetings ago, we presented Clayton with his advanced certificate. At that time, I told you the reason why he wasn't here is because he's just an extremely humble person who, you know, doesn't like to have that favorable light shined on him all the time. So, that would be the same for tonight, but Clayton completed an administrative leadership program through Pitt Community College in partnership with Milco Training Solutions. This was a leadership course that was four different blocks, 40 hours apiece, with a total of 160 hours. This course required, in order to obtain the certificate, it's 100% attendance, and you have up to three years to complete the training. We're proud that Clayton's initiative allowed him to complete this course in just 15 months. So, very thankful for the drive to continue to educate himself so that he could be not only present, but in a better leadership role for our department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, that will take us to item number 10 with our proclamations and public announcements. We have no proclamations tonight, so ask the control house to roll our public announcements. Excuse me. Oh, I get to do it now? Oh, okay. Change it up again. All right. All right. Excuse me. As you know, we're in an election year. We have candidate forums scheduled, or there are candidate forums scheduled. Wednesday, September 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll be at Fish Hut Grill at 301 Mangrove. Thursday, September 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the Watson Building at 9001 Red Drive. Tuesday, September 30th, excuse me, from 5:00 to 7:00, at Gaffer's Restaurant at 9106 Coast Guard Road. And then, presented by the League of Women Voters, Thursday, October 9th, from 6:00 to 7:30, here at the, or, excuse me, across the, I think at the community center, at 7500 Emerald Drive. Our final adaptive, well, final for the year, Adaptive Surf Project North Carolina Event will be held Saturday, September 13th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Eastern Ocean Regional Access. Visit adaptivesurfprojectnc.com. I wasn't able to stay very, very long, but I did make it a point to go out and visit. If you were here, or if you were keeping up with it, Adaptive Surf made a presentation and stole my heart, to say the least, and we asked everyone in our town, from admin all, all the way down to a volunteer, to do what they could do and get involved. And I took my niece out there for about 30, 45 minutes that first day, and I was blown away, left in happy tears with what the Adaptive Surf Project of North Carolina did. This is the final event of the year. This is not, by any stretch, the final event that Adaptive Surf Project and the town of Emerald Isle will collaborate on. Mark your calendar, save the date, even if you only have 15, 20 minutes, just go out and, and watch it, take a couple of pictures. It'll, it'll fill your heart, and it will, it'll lead you to do something for the greater good, or something for somebody other than yourself, something for somebody that can't on their own. So, I'll shut up, get involved with it, please. Beach driving begins Monday, September 15th. Online sales have, ways since begun, in-person sales, as far as passes have been conned, so 10-question test. If you fail that test, you probably don't deserve to be driving on the beach. It is not rocket surgery. Long-standing tradition, I love it to death, don't ever change it, but beach driving begins September 15th. I will encourage everybody that wants to drive on the beach, get your permit, obviously, take the test, obviously, be respectful to your neighbors, be respectful to your people that walk on the beach, be respectful to other beach drivers, let's protect this tradition, and be respectful to everybody else on the beach, whether they love beach driving or not, there's room for everybody. The next police educating the public will be held Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, from 10:00 to 11:00 here in the boardroom. First-day campaign signs permitted, Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Per our town's ordinance, campaign signs, whether they're in the yard or in the right-of-way, three feet off, and all that kind of stuff, are permitted 30 days prior to the beginning of one-stop voting, which is October 16th of this year. If you need a full list of the rules, go to the town website, they are there. Good luck to anyone that is running, whether you're a hopeful, or an incumbent, or anything like that. If you have any questions, please reach out to our administrative offices, and they'll be happy to help you. Our next Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisor Committee will be held Wednesday, September 17th, at 9:00 AM in the community center, just over the hill here. Our next Planning Board Meeting will be held Monday, September 22nd, 2025, at 6:00. I'm assuming that's here in the boardroom, it's not listed.
Accurate?
Yeah. Here in the boardroom. Next Coffee with Chief Panzarella and any other cops that show up will be held Thursday, September 25th, from 9:00 to 10:00 here in the boardroom. The Emerald Isle Fall Fishing Tournament. Fifth year?
This will be our seventh year, Mayor.
Seventh year? Jesus, God, I've been asleep. Seventh year, Emerald Isle Fall Fishing Tournament, Saturday, September 27th, 2025. More information is available at ei-fishing.com. I'd like to thank Commissioner Taylor for spearheading this tournament seven years ago. He's done wonderful things, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, given in the form of scholarships to our local youth, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars dedicated to local dredging. You've done a fantastic job, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
You've done a really, really fast, fantastic job. I was, excuse me, fortunate enough to be invited as a sponsor the first two or three years, and invited as a chase boat for a couple of years after that, and then last year, and then this coming year, a business owner and friend of Commissioner Taylor's has entered my boat. We didn't do so well last year, but as always this year, I filled my boat with veterans, lady, junior, senior, everybody. If we do crack the code and win some money, all of that money will be donated back to eiforvets.org, but I want to thank Commissioner Taylor, all of the, the committee members, volunteers, sponsors. It's, it's a big deal, it really is, and it, it comes and goes, and if you're not paying attention, it will pass you by, but it's not lost on me, what you've done, and the people that you've surrounded yourself have done. It's, it's a big deal, and thank you for everything. It's, it's a big deal. You should be proud of yourselves, you really should.
Good group of volunteers.
Paid Parking Ends, Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. Come to the beach, it's free, come October 1. Lifeguard Services End, Tuesday, September 30th, 2025. So if you're on the beach, if you're swimming and enjoying our, our beaches, October 1 and, and past, please know that lifeguard services have ended by there, please exercise extreme caution. Our next Neighborhood Watch Meeting will be held Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, at 4:00 here in the boardroom. Emerald Isle Fire Department Breast Cancer Awareness Shirts. Shirts are available to order online, direct ship to your house. All proceeds will benefit our Little Pink Houses of Hope. If you don't know what Little Pink Houses of Hope is, Google it, or look it up on social media when you get home, it's a fantastic cause. Emerald Isle for Veterans Golf Tournament will be held Thursday, October 9th, 2025, at noon, registration at the Star Hill Golf Course. Household Hazardous Waste Collection, Saturday, October 11th, between 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM at the Carteret County Health Department at 3820 Bridges Street. So if you have that old jug of gas, or the old thing full of motor oil, this is where you can get rid of it. Our next Board of Commissioners Meeting will be held October 14th, 2025, at 6:00, about 30 days from now, here in the boardroom. I'm done, sir. All right, moving on to item number 11 would be our Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Sanderson with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, 5-0. Thank you very much. Item number 12, the first time I've ever met her, I messed her name up, I'm gonna try one more time, with a presentation on our 2025 municipal election. Caitlin Sabatish?
I got it right this time. Right. Well, first of all, thank you all for having me. I've been the Director for the Carteret County Board of Elections, thank you, for almost six years now, if you can believe that. I can't. This will be my second time doing this municipal outreach, so this is really just to spread the word, what to expect in this upcoming municipal election, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, get the word out about what, what the schedules are, what the deadlines are for this upcoming municipal election to elect a new mayor and town council. So the setup of the town government, the mayor seat is a four-year term, there's one mayor, there are five commissioners, and they are elected three at a time. The two highest vote-getters for the commissioners are elected to a four-year term, the lowest of the three vote-getters is elected to a two-year term. Any resignations or appointments are filled by the seated board, and they are filled through the full expiration of the term, so there are no unexpired terms. All of that is outlined in the town charter. Not all municipalities are created equal, so Atlantic Beach operates a little bit different, Moorhead City operates a little bit different, but this is strictly for Emerald Isle. The election style for the municipal election is a nonpartisan plurality. That basically means that party affiliation isn't, isn't considered for these contests. All of these contests that you'll be seeing on the municipal ballot will be nonpartisan. So in a primary election, you'll see the candidate's name with the party affiliation for that candidate, you won't see that this time. So all of these contests are nonpartisan races. So the seats up for reelection in 2025 is the mayor seat and three commissioner seats. We elect our candidates through a candidate filing period. The candidate filing period is about two weeks long. The candidates come in, if they're eligible and they're registered to vote, they file for candidacy, fill out any required campaign finance paperwork that they may be required to fill out, and then we make sure that they're registered, verify them, and then they are on the ballot. This coming election, they're in the mayoral race, it is a vote-for-one contest, and there are two candidates that have filed for candidacy. So it is a contested contest, but is a vote-for-one. If you circle both of those bubbles, or circle, or fill in one candidate, and then write in another candidate, and also circle that, it's considered an overvote, and that vote will not be counted because we can't determine who that person wanted in a vote-for-one contest. So make sure you're only filling one bubble out for the vote-for-one contest. For the commissioners, we have five candidates that have filed for election. For the commissioners, we have five candidates that have filed for election this time, this is a vote-for-three contest. So in the vote-for-three contest, same thing, you fill out those three bubbles, if it's any more than that, the machine can't determine what the voter's intent was, and that, none of those votes will be counted. So make sure you're filling in three or less, if you only fill in two, that's great, we got you covered. For all of these contests, there are write-in lines. I know that the picture's a little bit small, but anyone can write in an eligible candidate for election. The rule with this is, is that if there are five or more votes for one particular write-in candidate, we have to make sure that they're eligible to be elected in that contest, and we also have to report them if there's five or more. This is a manual process, we go through them at the Board of Elections, we're an office of four, we see all of your Santa Clauses, all of the dollies, we get a lot of Reba, so we see all those and we do go through them, it's a lot of extra work on us, so if you do have an eligible candidate in mind that you would like to write in, please write in that candidate, but I don't need to see any Santa Clauses this year. As far as voting and eligibility, so voters must be registered within the municipal limits. Only voters that are registered to vote in Emerald Isle and live in Emerald Isle can vote in an Emerald Isle municipal election. We get a lot of confused voters showing up to the polls for municipal elections, they live in Morehead City, but they're really passionate about beach parking, so they want to come and vote for these guys, but we have to make sure that only the voters that are eligible to vote in these contests are the ones that are voting. For the municipal election, we will be having absentee voting, we will do early voting, and we'll also have Election Day voting, and I'll go into the details in each one of those, but I do want to highlight that the voter registration deadline is October 10th at 5:00 p.m. This is for paper documents, voter registration forms, I do have some with me, if anyone wants to take one with them, update address, name, party affiliation, et cetera. Deadline to submit those into the Board of Elections Office is October 10th at 5:00 p.m. So going into absentee by mail, all of our 11 municipalities in Carteret County are eligible for absentee by mail voting. This is also outlined in the town charter, it addresses that specifically to allow absentee voting. With absentee voting, all of the ballots that go out must be requested, so we don't just mail out ballots to every registered voter here in Carteret County, the ballots must be requested by the voter themselves or a near relative of that voter. The deadline to request an absentee by mail ballot is October 21st at 5:00 p.m. That can be done online through a portal system and access through the state board's website, and we also have the forms available at our office. For absentee by mail, photo ID is required for all forms of voting in North Carolina. So for absentee by mail specifically, we require a photocopy of the photo ID to be included in the absentee ballot envelope. Also required for absentee by mail are two witnesses and the voter's signature. So the absentee by mail ballots, if you do request one or you're helping a family member or relative complete their absentee ballot, it's going to come in an envelope like this, it's going to have Carteret County Board of Elections at the top, certified election mail. In this big envelope, there are two more envelopes. One is a container return envelope to protect the photo ID and keep that private while it's going through the mail. The other one is going to have a clear sleeve where you can slide in the photocopy of the photo ID, so make sure you include that. Then on the back, it requires voter's signature up top, and it also requires two witnesses. The witnesses that are witnessing this voted ballot have to state their name, state their address, and also sign. If there are any type of deficiencies on this return envelope, it goes through a cure process, and I'm not going to bore you with that, but if you have questions about it, please feel free to reach out to me. But, long story short, if you're helping anyone make sure they have the two witnesses, photocopy of the photo ID, and the voter signs the envelope. This goes into the privacy envelope, and then it goes into the mail and back to us. All of our absentee by mail meetings are public, they're at the Board of Elections Office in Beaufort, I know that's a bit of a hike for y'all, but they are open to the public, we have them every Tuesday, five weeks leading up to the election. So if you're curious about our processes, want to see what we're doing over there, I really encourage y'all to come and see what the process really is. For early voting, it is going to be October 16th through November 1st. We are going to run Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and we are going to have one Saturday operating November 1st, and these hours are a bit short on the last Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We're going to have three locations for early voting, the closest one to here is going to be over at Western Park in Cedar Point. We will also have a location at Ford Benjamin Park in Newport, and also an early voting location at our office at the Board of Elections in Beaufort. During early voting, I know I said before that the voter registration deadline was October 10th at 5:00 p.m., but there's always exceptions to every rule, right? So during early voting, anyone that is not registered by October 10th can register and vote during early voting. So if somebody has missed the deadline, send them to early voting and we will get them squared away. For election day, oh, for early voting, I do want to mention, you can go to any one of our early voting locations, it doesn't matter where you live, if you're registered in Carteret County or live in Carteret County and need to register to vote, you can go to any one of those locations. Election Day voting is a little bit different in that on Election Day, November 4th, you can only go to your Election Day voting precinct. In this case, it's over at the community center, okay? Polls are open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and I'm going to highlight the voter registration deadline again, October 10th at 5:00 p.m., if you know anyone that needs to make any updates to their voter registration. So photo ID is required for all forms of voting. This is going to be whether you're voting absentee by mail and you need that photocopy, or if you're voting in-person on Election Day or in-person during early voting, photo ID is required. A North Carolina driver's license is fine, I've got them listed up here, they're also available on our website. A passport is fine, state ID, nonoperator ID, so make sure you bring a photo ID with you when you go to vote. If you know someone that does not have a photo ID, that you can send them to our office, we print, we'll take their picture, the process takes about 10 minutes, they fill out a form, we snap their picture, and we will provide them with a free photo ID. So, no charge on that either. If someone does not have a photo ID to present when they go to vote or to include in their absentee by mail envelope, they can fill out the ID exception form, which is going to be also included in the envelope that the ballot is mailed out, they're going to, it's going to be a yellow form, and then our board will review those. So if there is a case where someone doesn't have a photo ID when they present to vote, there are ways around that to where that person is still eligible to vote or able to vote. Some exceptions that I did want to mention, if you are over the age of 65 and you have an expired driver's license, it can be, if it was valid when you were, when you turned 65, let's say now you're 85, if it was valid on your 65th birthday, you can still use that for voting purposes. Also, with driver's license, it can be, the photo ID can be expired for up to one calendar year, and we can still accept that for voting purposes. So if you say, "Oh, man, my driver's license just went out two weeks ago, and I'm, I got to vote, I got to get in to vote," it's okay if it expired within that calendar year. There is a funny nuance that I cannot explain, but these are the laws and I have to enforce them, is no temporary IDs. So if you've gone to the DMV and you get that piece of paper and they say, "Oh, we'll mail you your photo ID," so you walk in to vote with your paper copy, your temporary ID, we cannot accept that as a form of photo ID for voting purposes. So if you're in that situation, DMV hasn't gotten your actual ID to you yet, make sure you come in and see us, we'll print you a free photo ID and make sure you're all squared away to vote. There are, there's a list for tribal enrollment cards, I'm not going to go into that, and also any military ID or government-issued ID is good for voting purposes. So just to go through some voter registration statistics, I know everyone loves this, but I get excited about it. So in 2023, we had 26, almost 27% voter turnout. In municipal elections, our voter turnout is a lot less than what we normally see in a presidential election. I can't understand this because this is where it all happens, it happens at the local level, and I can't understand why more people don't get involved. So that's why I'm out here doing the municipal outreach, trying to get more people involved, get the word out that we are having a municipal election and they are important. So, in a presidential election, we normally see about 82, 83% voter turnout, and in the municipal election, we hover around 25 to 27. So, tell your friends, get them out, make sure they're getting out to vote. In the town of Emerald Isle, we have just over 4,000 eligible registered voters, and I expect that that'll probably stay the same through October 10th, the voter registration deadline. So, I will open it up for questions, if y'all have time, if anyone has any specific questions, if there are personal questions about, "Oh, I changed my address, what do I need to do now?" Just contact me afterwards. Oh, I have my contact information up there, but I do have a couple cards, so if you have personal questions, just let me know, and thank y'all for listening to me, I hope you tell all your friends that weren't here tonight.
Thank you, Caitlin, excuse me, thank you Caitlin, was very informative. From the board or from any member of the audience with a raised hand, any questions for Miss Sabatish?
How's it going, let me off easy?
Anyone, anyone?
Caitlin, will you be on my golf team next time?
Got me.
She's a great golfer, by the way.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you once again for being here, thank you so much. All right.
Mayor Holland, commissioners, during the public announcements at the beginning of the meeting, you listed the upcoming candidate forums for Emerald Isle. There is one that we didn't include in that list, we just found out about it yesterday, and so there's another event on October the 5th from 3:00 to 5:00 at Bar 1957, so I just wanted to put that out there for folks, just a late addition.
So for the folks in the back, October 5th, at Bar 57.
Three to five.
Across the walkway from Rucker Johns, from when to when?
Three to five on Sunday, October the 5th.
Three to five, Sunday, October 5th, Bar 57, right across from Rucker Johns, duly noticed, sir, thank you. All right, item 13, street resurfacing package. Joe Smith, you in the house?
There he is. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. I come before you tonight to ask you for the approval of the 2025 street resurfacing contract. I went out, I got a list of streets that we thought were in need, I compiled that list together, I came out, once I have that list, I went to Frank, presented the list to him, him and I went out, checked the streets, came up with a list of what we thought needed to be done. So we came up with approximately 1.9 miles of street to be resurfaced. Those streets include Boginlet Drive between Canal Drive and Sound Drive on the sound side, Cedar Street Midway Block to Sound on the, then Lee Avenue would be from Emerald Drive to Sound Drive. Some of the segments on Lee Avenue have been done previously, last few years, part of it was when we replaced the stormwater pipe, and then last year we did a section near Sound Drive, so those will be butted up to on that. Sound Drive was the other one, street that we came up with from Boginlet through the cul-de-sac, same issue would be there too, there are some segments that were previously paved last year and the year before, so they'll just butt up to those and do that. What we're going to do is edge mill the edges, and then they'll butt up to any seams that we have. After we did that list and all that, I went out to three area contractors, those three area contractors were Coastline Contracting, Anzo Paving and Grading, and Thomas Simpson Construction. So we solicited quotes from them, the quotes came back in, our pricing was for Coastline Contracting was $1,264 per square yard, which equates to a total cost of $286,776. Anzo Paving and Grading, their cost came in at $12.95 per square yard, which equates to a total cost of $297,809. Thomas Simpson, his cost per square yard varied between whatever street segments we were asking, and then his total equated to $367,400, or $743. So I guess tonight, I'm, sorry, tonight I'm just asking you to, if we can approve a contract tonight to Coastline, they were the cheapest one in, or the lowest quote, so that's, sorry.
You want some money? You want some money?
Yes.
And Joe, that was a savings of about $15,000 too, wasn't it?
I'm sorry, what?
What was the savings amount on the?
Yeah, so I believe it was around $15,000 savings.
So Mayor Holland, Commissioners, you should have a replacement agenda item at your packages tonight, and I emailed that to you shortly before the board meeting. So the board's asked to approve the resolution in that replacement agenda item package, which does authorize the contract with Coastline Contracting, as Public Works Director Smith acknowledged. That's a total cost of $286,776, they are the low bidder. When we revised everything over the last couple of days, we actually did wind up saving about $13,000 when we clarified some things, so that's good news for the town. Total 1.9 miles, I think it's a good, solid package for the town to move forward with this year. Coastline Contracting, if the board awards a contract, we expect them to do the work during the last week of September, so I look forward to having that work done if the board authorizes that tonight. The budget amendment that's included in your replacement agenda item, it basically appropriates unused PAL bill funds that are left over from prior years, so the budget amendment includes a total of $74,860. We would add that to the current year PAL bill distribution, which is about $196,000. We've got a little bit of extra money available in Public Works to fund this contract, so those funds are statutorily restricted for paving activities, other sidewalk pedestrian type things. So if the board is, finds this a contract acceptable, would ask you to approve the resolution and the budget amendment included in the package.
Thanks, sir. So per your replacement agenda item, excuse me, email, suggested motion would be to have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing street resurfacing contract with Coastline Contracting, and then another motion to adopt the general fund budget amendment. That being said, I'll open it up to any potential motion or discussion from the board.
Make a motion to authorize a resolution for street resurfacing be awarded to Coastline Contracting.
Motion is on the floor by Commissioner Sanderson, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the general fund budget amendment, also.
Commissioner Taylor with the motion to adopt the general fund budget amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried, thank you, sir, thank you, everybody. All right, item 14, Planning Director Linda Staub with Ordinance Amendment Chapter 9 with, regarding nuisances in the Code of Ordances.
Hi, Linda.
How are you?
I'm well.
This is a pretty easy amendment. In 2019, the General Assembly moved the regulations relating to unsafe buildings from Chapter 160A to Chapter 160D. Beyond that, nothing changes, nothing has changed, and we're just asking that you adopt this ordinance amendment to reflect the change from 160A to 160D.
All right, any questions for our planning director regarding this item? All right, any questions for our planning director regarding this item?
I'd make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 9 nuisances of the Code of Ordinances to clarify provisions regarding unsafe buildings.
Commissioner Wooton with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Thank you. That's the easiest, nicest work you've had in a while, right? Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, Mayor Holland, Commissioners, if I could just add to that, there is a report in your packet under the comments from the town manager with an update on all the nuisance cases that we're currently working on. And I appreciate Linda's hard work on those issues and look forward to John's hard work on that going forward. We have made that a high priority going forward to resolve any nuisance issues, whether they involve structures that are unsafe, whether they involve vehicles that are abandoned or junked, and really putting a new emphasis on that for the town. You know, my approach is always to try to resolve these things in a cooperative manner with the property owner, and so that's the approach that we begin with, and that's what we're, the phase we're in right now. Ultimately, if we don't secure voluntary cooperation, we may be forced to move forward with the more formal legal proceedings that are outlined essentially in the ordinance amendment that you all just approved. So don't want it to get to that point, but if need be, we will get to that point and really working hard to get some areas cleaned up. So thanks. And this ordinance amendment really strengthens our ability to do that.
Thank you, sir. All right, item number 15 would be the proposal for a new roundabout flagpole. Give it up to Mr. Rush, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Holland, Commissioners. Here to present a strategy for you to consider tonight to install a new flagpole in the center of the roundabout. My understanding is that this has been discussed by the board on previous occasions. I was able to work with members of the EI for Vets organization, work with Publix Shopping Center, DOT officials, other town staff to come up with a strategy that I hope you will find acceptable, and hopefully the community will find acceptable. So essentially, as you know, and as you can see in the picture, just a pure coincidence, this is a GIS system photo from last year, and the Christmas tree happens to be in the middle of the roundabout in the picture. I didn't plan it that way, but the recommendation is to essentially move the Egress statue that is located currently in the middle of the roundabout over to a location that is basically adjacent to the Publix sign, and you can see it on the screen there. That Egress statue was donated by the developer of the Publix Shopping Center in 2018. He wanted to provide some public art. So I reached out to the leadership at Publix to secure their approval to move that Egress statue over near their sign. They're supportive of that. With the relocation of the Egress statue, which would be done by town staff, our Public Works Department would move that over to that location, that would free up the location in the center of the roundabout for a new flagpole. And so the proposal is for a 35 to 40-foot flagpole at that location. As I think you're aware, the EI for Vets group has engaged in some fundraising activities. The proposal for your consideration tonight relies on the EI for Vets group funding the actual flagpole purchase. We estimate that's going to be in the $5,000 to $6,000 range, and then the town would provide the installation, the funding for that, any uplighting associated with the flag, and certainly, as I mentioned, any costs associated with moving the Egress sculpture over to Publix. We expect to rent some special equipment for one day to move that. So we've got a large concrete block on the bottom of it. So the EI Vets group would provide the funding for it, we'd cover everything else. The flagpole would be located in the center of the roundabout. As you can see on the image here, the red circle directly to the left or to the west of the roundabout, that's the proposed location for the town's Christmas tree. As you all know, in the past, in recent years, it's basically been placed over top of the Egress sculpture. We would essentially move it 18 feet to the west and locate it still in the roundabout feature. There's enough room there for that to clear the flag and the flagpole. That Christmas tree is 22 feet tall, and the topper on it is an additional four feet, so it's 26 feet. So for example, if we had a 35-foot flagpole with a six-foot tall flag, you'd still have enough vertical separation there to see the flag beyond the Christmas tree. There's also enough horizontal separation on the ground. The flag would not extend out to the Christmas tree. If you're driving onto Emerald Isle from the bridge, the image you would see when you get to the roundabout is the Christmas tree followed up with the flag right behind it. I would recommend placing the Christmas tree in this location, however, that's not the only option that you have available. In the packet, I included several other options. One is right here at the southeastern corner, basically near the Growler, that would be a good prominent location. Some additional locations, took a look at the intersection, southwest intersection of Coast Guard Road and Highway 58 in the grassy area there, also highly visible for folks coming into town and going straight or turning down Coast Guard Road. Another location in the grassy area across from the food line, a little bit further up from the existing roundabout, certainly the Welcome Center where it was once located in the past when we first purchased the tree. I think all four of those locations are highly visible, would be good locations. There are some minor costs associated with a couple of those to make sure we've got the electricity there. Again, the recommendation that I'm putting forth for you tonight is this setup here to place it inside the roundabout, just slightly offset from the existing Egress and the proposed new flagpole location. A couple of other things to consider, that's just a picture of the Egress statue there. You know, one of the things that was suggested by a few different people, if we do put a new flagpole in the roundabout, you may want to think about doing some sort of Christmas light design hanging off of the pole in the form of a Christmas tree, something kind of similar to what you see on the screen here. I've seen those in other communities, very attractive and could be a nice feature in Emerald Isle. But again, the proposal tonight is to place the Christmas tree just 18 feet west of the existing Egress location, new flagpole location, and then think about doing something like this in the future as time and funds permit. My goal, if the board is comfortable with this strategy, is to try to make it happen prior to this Christmas season. We may or may not achieve that. If not, we would do it certainly sometime after the first of the year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Not really asking for a motion tonight, really just want to establish consensus among the board, give you a chance to talk about it. If you have other suggestions or ideas, I'm happy to look into those and try to make those happen. Appreciate all the input from the different groups that I mentioned earlier, and really look forward to doing something nice for the community. Absolutely appreciate the EI for Vets group raising the funds and coming up with the idea and celebrating our great country. So happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. And thank you for all your hard work, Frank and staff. Any questions for Town Manager, or discussion amongst yourselves?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I was just curious, the last picture was just up. Would we, I know we're trying to grow our Christmas decorations throughout the town, and if you could flip back to that one Christmas tree lit up as a telephone pole, if possible. That picture there, would you still be able to fly the flag at the top of that Christmas tree? Would it still be able to fly? What I was leaning toward is if the Christmas tree is, the one we have now is currently in a one location, and we create another Christmas tree, too, it helps grow the more Christmas ornaments throughout the town by doing this situation here, and still having the tree that we currently have in a different location just grows without Christmas growth? I was just curious.
Yeah, I would, I don't think we could fly the flag and use this display at the same time, so it would be one or the other.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for, excuse me, Mr. Rush?
I'd really like the, just west of the flagpole, as you're coming in, you see the Christmas tree with the flag over top of it. Christmas tree is what, six weeks out of the year we have it up?
Yeah, right before Thanksgiving to right after the first of the year.
I think that sounds very attractive.
Which office?
The first one with the tree just west in the roundabout. I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I like that one also. Thank you.
I would like to look into the future of those, that last picture you showed. I think that's appeasing.
Yeah. When was that, just for everybody?
Just the last picture, in the future, where you're shooting it from the bowl, you know, just centering it up. I think that's a very good look, very bright, so, but yeah, to the west.
I think Commissioner Taylor brought it to our attention that there's one in New Bern very similar to that. Mark, you probably know about that. I'm certain that we can find the details on that one.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, we can absolutely do that. Let's see if we can get the flagpole installed in time for this Christmas, and certainly have another conversation about that if you all are comfortable. Those Christmas tree light packages are actually pretty affordable, so we're probably talking a couple thousand dollars or so to make that happen. So none of the expenses associated with this are very significant, so I certainly have the authority to authorize those expenditures. I just want to make sure you're comfortable with the overall strategy.
Yeah, we would be remiss not to mention our appreciation to the Emerald Isle for Vets and Mr. John Troutman for his donation for the flagpole and the improvements and everything that that will bring to this community and the recognition of our military and its importance.
I'll offer up mine and anybody that's willing to lock arms with me as far as any future fundraising efforts for EI for Vets, whether it be for this flagpole or to support any veteran, whether they're part of that organization or not. We got a path forward, we'll find a way to pay for it, I promise you that, okay?
Yes.
I want to ask for a motion. We'll ask for consensus, and I'll ask for it in the forums. Does anybody have any issues to the contrary with staff moving forward as proposed tonight?
I have no problem.
No.
You got consensus, sir? Please proceed. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And thank you, eiforvets.org. All right, moving on, excuse me, item number 16A, Planning Board. We have one vacancy on the Planning Board. The Board of Commissioners will consider appointing one individual to serve the remainder of the unexpired term on the Planning Board, and then we have seven vacancies to fill on the Board of Adjustment. We'll do one at a time. We'll start with the one vacancy on the Planning Board. Between clerk and attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, back in the day, it was deduced or discerned or what have you that we went to a roll call vote for that. I don't know how many applications we had, and the procedure for moving forward, Staub will be quiet and let you guide us.
So I'll start. So for the Planning Board, since we only have one vacancy, per procedure, we are to go by a roll call vote. So that will just entail you all have open floor for nominations, you make your nominations. Once that's done, then you go down, roll call, nominate who you want. For the Board of Adjustment, since we have seven, for efficiency and sanity's sake, a roll call vote would likely be too much, so that's why we have that ballot procedure. It's perfectly fine within our procedures to go like that, it's kind of a unique situation. So for all of us to keep our heads on straight, that roll, or the ballot vote for the Board of Adjustment will be more than appropriate there. So any questions on that procedure?
Okay. So correct me if I'm wrong, addressing item 16A with one Planning Board vacancy, I can start left, right, in the middle, and open for nomination, so. Now, for clarity's sake, nomination or?
Just for nomination. So the board can nominate based on all of the potential applicants. They can only say one, they can say every single one. Then you go, and once that's done, close the nomination, move forward with the roll call.
Okay. All right, and if I, excuse me, if I go out of order, go out of turn, go out of anything like that, please feel free to let me know. For the past three and a half years, I've always started to my right, so I'll start with Commissioner Sawyer, and we are, to remind, we are addressing item 16A, the one vacancy on Planning Board. So Commissioner Taylor, your nomination, sir?
I'd like to nominate Scott Bookout.
All right, Commissioner Wooten?
I'll nominate Mr. Tany Browder.
All right, Commissioner Brownlow?
I review the applications very carefully, and I take it serious, and anyone knows from the previous Planning Board appointments, I call and do my research on them, and I found that Mr. Browder, being engineering background, would be a valuable asset to the Planning Board, replacing an engineer who's leaving, or who has left the board, so I think that'd be a fair replacement, so I'd go with Tany Browder.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sawyer?
I'd like to nominate Scott Bookout.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson?
Scott Bookout.
All right, counsel, we go to a roll call vote now, sir?
Yes, you can.
All right, I'll go in the same order. Commissioner Taylor?
I stand by Scott Bookout.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooten?
I'd go with Scott Bookout.
Commissioner Brownlow?
Browder.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sawyer?
Scott Bookout.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Scott Bookout.
All right, for a, unless I'm mistaken, four to one vote, looks like Scott Bookout will be the next Planning Board member. Thank you all of our applicants, and congratulations, Scott. Look forward to working with you, sir. Excuse me, all right, 16B, the Board of Adjustment, we have seven vacancies. If you'll lead us off in that discussion once more, please, sir.
So I would just say, in front of you, you're going to see a ballot. You have seven votes.
Yeah.
Fill out seven applicants, and we will tally.
One thing I just want to add to that, as part of establishing, re-establishing the Board of Adjustment now, we do have to establish staggered terms. So we've outlined in the written materials a suggested procedure for figuring out the staggered terms. So essentially, what's recommended is the candidates, the two candidates with the most votes would get a three-year term, the two candidates with the next highest number of votes would get a two-year term, the one that is the fifth-place vote would be a one-year term, and then the last two would be the alternates, and they would serve a one-year term as well. That's the recommendation. This has the potential to get very confusing depending on what the results are with the ballot, but that's the intent at this point, and we certainly can talk about that when you're done.
Board, does any, any board member have any comments, questions, concerns, or anything like that regarding the Board of Adjustment, this process, anything like that? I'm obviously not going to check off any names or anything like that, because per procedure, I only vote to break a tie, but again, per law and per procedure, I can't break a tie when it comes to appointments to committees or boards. So anyone have any questions for management clerk or anything like that regarding this process? Sorry, we don't have any Jeopardy! Final Answer music for you guys. We're going to time this?
Nothing like public math.
Were you trying to queue it up?
There you go.
Thanks, sir. What is dinner's getting cold?
I'm serious.
Why y'all take stake for a thousand?
So we have some, some clear answers for you. You actually selected eight people for seven vacancies. So the good news is it won't be quite as complicated moving forward. So Mark Ahuna and Scott Henson received the most votes and would receive the three-year terms according to the guidelines on the ballot. The third place person is Mark Brenner Schultz, who would receive a two-year term. And then we have five individuals tied for the remaining four seats. So I think the recommended course of action would be for the town clerk to provide a new ballot to you with those five individuals' names. Have you pick four of them and then one more person will get a two-year term, a couple will get a, or one more will get a one-year term, then you'll have the two alternates as well. So Jen, I think that's the best way to proceed is to take the five individuals, put them on a ballot by themselves and let's take another shot at it, Mr. Trebek. So the, the five individuals who were tied for the remaining four spots are Andrew Frick, Eric Haveland, Tim Kinch, Mark Wicker, and Catherine Wren. So you'll need to pick four of those five and she'll get you a new ballot here shortly.
Can we just circle out of those five on our old one?
He's got all the ballots, right, so.
Go, girl.
You have to be a resident of the town to be on a board too, don't you?
Yes, sir. That is correct, yes.
Frank, question for you. So when this board is chosen, it's all picked out, did they pick their leader? The leader will vote on who's the head of the?
Correct. And, and we'll get the new Board of Adjustment members together and get them oriented and get some, get them training for that group as well.
I was about to ask if you were almost done.
Please tell me it's clear. All right, so the person in the second round, the person with the most votes is Eric Haveland. So he would serve a two-year term. And then we actually have a tie for the next two. That was, one of those would be a one-year regular member and the other one would be a one-year alternate member. Those two individuals are Andrew Frick and Tim Kinch. And then we have a tie for the final two to determine, I guess, who would be the alternate, the second alternate in that case. We did receive some information earlier today that questioned whether or not Catherine Wren is a resident of Emerald Isle, a full-time resident of Emerald Isle. We have not verified that, but that was something that was indicated to us earlier today. So if, if that's a consideration for you, obviously do with that what you will. If you, for example, did not appoint her, it would be pretty clear going forward. The only decision would be who's the alternate and who's the regular member for the one-year term.
All right, so assuming the lady is not a resident, or are we confident in whether or not she is? I want to get it right, but I don't want to drag this up all night either.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we have full confirmation or confidence in that, but there's strong indication that that may be the case.
Is this the same individual that I believe her husband wrote to our finance director stating that she lives in Boardwalk currently and they own property in Sunset Harbor where they're building a house?
It was in emails.
It was in, it was in emails that we've received.
Yeah, I think we could probably tell that from looking at her application.
Yeah, it just, it seems like that's the same name.
I, I saw a couple of applications that had out-of-town mailing addresses and that's what.
Yeah, there were several that did have out-of-town.
But, I mean, they might own property here, but I wasn't sure if they were residents.
There were a couple that stated they were not.
Yeah, so Catherine Wren listed her Emerald Isle property address as 101 Islander Drive, Lot 29. So that seems to be consistent with Boardwalk. Listed a mailing address of Rowan Oak Rapids, North Carolina.
Can we pull that up on GIS? That last name?
Can we pull the last, I'm sorry.
The email stated that they were building a home. I mean, it, it could be irrelevant, let's just decide where we're going first.
Well, well, I think, you know, certainly welcome the input of everyone, but building a home is not a resident yet, will be theoretically, could be a resident in the future.
She's a resident on Islander Drive.
My recommendation to you for simplicity, assuming the town attorney is comfortable with this, is to simply make a choice between Andrew Frick and Tim Kinch, whether or not which one should be the regular member and which one should be the alternate member, and do that by motion if you're comfortable with that, just to simplify things going forward and then figure out the final seat. So just to recap where we're at, Ahuna and Henson were selected for a three-year term. Brenner Schultz was selected for a two-year term. This second round of voting, Haveland would receive a two-year term, Frick and Kinch would receive a one-year term. And the question for you to decide is who's the regular member and who's the alternate.
I make a motion that based on alphabetical order, we award a one-year term to Andrew Frick and a one-year alternate to Tim Kinch.
Commissioner Sanderson has your motion on the floor. All in favor?
I'd like to maybe table the remaining votes until maybe next month, until we have a chance to review the applications. I wish I brought them with me, but I wasn't in a place where I could print them and have them with me.
Okay, well, after a motion, there's always room for a discussion.
That wouldn't hurt my head either. Is there a scheduled, it's only two people that were holding on. Is there a scheduled meeting of the Board of Adjustments?
Yeah, there, there's no pending business for the Board of Adjustment to consider. So you have plenty of time if you'd like.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson, with respect to your motion, it is always open for discussion, so we can discuss or you can amend or withdraw or go forward with your motions, up to you guys.
I will withdraw the motion conditional upon the appointments that we've already made being enforced at this point.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson with the motion to enforce the appointments that have been made and table the one-year and one-year alternate.
Correct.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
I assume you'd table the second one-year alternate as well, so you'll consider three at your next meeting in October. Is there any additional information you'd like us to secure for you or any way we could be helpful on this?
Can other people still submit an application to be on the Board of Adjustment?
So that was going to be my next question for you. Do you want to limit the consideration in October just to the individuals we're talking about here, which are Frick and Kinch and who's going to get the regular alternate?
I make a motion that we limit that to those who have already met the application deadline.
Okay.
That is long past.
But do you want to limit the October considerations to just Frick and Kinch and then Wicker and Wren?
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that of those that are left, are they the ones that I saw that were potentially not residents? I, I don't know for a fact.
I think we could do diligence between now and the October meeting to establish permanent residency or not. Anybody that's not a permanent resident will obviously be disqualified for consideration in my role.
And I would just add on to that, for all intents and purposes, Frick and Kinch would already be on the board, it's just determining what their status will be.
Correct.
Only then Wicker and Wren would be whether or not they are on the board at all.
All right, so the motion was to limit the considerations with residency verification being done to the applicants that made the original application deadlines. Is that accurate, Commissioner Sanderson?
Correct.
All right, motion is on the floor. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion's carried four one. Thank you very much. Okay. Item 17, comments from town clerk, attorney and manager. Mrs. Clerk? Never. Ms. Slaughter?
No comments today. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Just a few thanks. I just wanted to publicly thank Linda Staub, our interim planning director, for her service over the last few months. It's been a joy to work with her and really appreciate her assistance as she moved back into full-time retirement. So thank you, Linda.
Lots of comments in the written materials, but just to highlight a couple things. One is that Carteret County and the Down East Rural Planning Organization are working on the update to the Carteret County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We'll have some representatives from that group here at your October meeting to brief you on the plan and the projects that might impact Emerald Isle down the road. This is a very preliminary step in the overall process to see new traffic improvements or transportation improvements, but look forward to hearing from them at your October meeting. I'm scheduled to meet with the district engineer for our area next week to really review a few different things in Emerald Isle related to stormwater and related to some other ideas for traffic signal poles, maybe some other Christmas tree type things as well. So look forward to meeting with him. The last thing I would say to you is the staff completed the installation of a new delineated pedestrian path at the Black Skimmer Ramp and real pleased with the work that they did. So glad to have that in place before beach driving starts on Monday. We're also going to be making a similar improvement at the Dogleg Ramp. We won't have that done by September 15th, but we'll get on it as quick as we can. So happy to answer any other questions you have about the written materials or anything else on your mind.
Thanks, sir. All right, comments from the board. Commissioner Taylor?
Chief Bailey back there, I just want to say it was, it was nice seeing one of our lifeguards become a fireman. I think the only way you can top that is, is seeing one of our junior training lifeguards out there work up, become a fireman one day. So I look forward to that happening and watching it from the citizenship that I'll be enjoying here pretty soon. That was, that was really cool. So I thought that was nice to watch the progression going on and congratulations to the other firemen too for coming on board. It's always nice to see a fireman with EMT capabilities too. I know we've talked about that over the years, so it's great that we're getting those guys and ladies coming on board, very happy about that. Congratulations to the chief also on the policeman and his training and stuff. I was really happy to see that. And Linda, thanks for stepping up and helping us in a need of time and congratulations to our new planning director back there. I'm excited to watch, watch you do and I love the customer relations. That's really important that I've seen in this town and this environment that we need to look forward to seeing great things and watching, watching the planning department grow and prosper. Fishing tournament's coming around the corner and you know that's near and dear to my heart. Please sign up, fish, come fish it. It's only a one-day tournament. All you need is a fishing lodge, walk out and surf fish with us. If you got a boat, get on your boat, go out and fish also. Always looking for volunteers. Thanks for all the support with the community and all the sponsors that we have out there. It's, couldn't do it with all these guys and ladies. So thank you very much and that's all I got. Thank you, Frank. Good job.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Wooton?
Just a thank you to Linda and congratulations on getting back to retirement. I really appreciate everything you did for the town. I know it's better than, better than when you founded, so thank you very much. And thank you, Joe, for that post and rope walkway. I've already gotten very positive comments from the folks in the community, so thank you for that and with that, have a good night.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Brownlow?
I'd like to start out first of all by thanking the, the community for that outpouring of love and prayers and thoughts for my wife, Joy. I'll come back to that in a second and I, but right now I want to thank Linda Staub for stepping in and leading our planning department so effectively until we could hire a new planning director. And Linda, your steady hand and dedication have meant a great deal to our town and, and our community and I hope you finally get to enjoy the retirement that you so well deserve. But back to the-
from the bottom of our hearts. Emerald Isle's truly blessed to have such a dedicated, skilled, compassionate individual serving our community. Thank you very much for your thoughts and prayers.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Sawyer?
I'd like to thank town staff, great job, um, everybody coming out tonight. Linda, I guess she's already ran off to retirement. She's been hanging around very long. John, welcome aboard, it's great to have you, and, uh, everybody have a great night.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanderson?
Thanks again to our staff for everything that they do and our amazing first responders. Um, thank you to Emerald Isle Veterans Association for, uh, putting together the flagpole initiative, and I, I look forward to welcoming that to our community, and thank you all for coming out, and we all continue to pray for Joy Brownlow. That's all, good night.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll, uh, I'll keep it short. Thank you, Linda, welcome, John. Um, thank you to our first responders, our town staff, our town administrative, uh, personnel, um, our elected officials, uh, even. We, 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 we take a lot of praise and we take a lot of heat, and, uh, willingly so, um, whether you're firefighter, fire chief, town clerk, elected official, doesn't matter, uh, it's a heavy lift. You, uh, me, we do it because we love it, it's not always fun, it's not always easy, um, make a lot of friends, um, by default, and you lose a lot of friends by default, um, but, uh, at the end of the day, you, you do it because it's what you love and it's where you love to live. It's not a light lift in a lot of respects. Um, I will say, um, to all the elected official hopefuls out there, uh, whether you're here or whether you're, uh, watching or you hear about it later, good luck, uh, best of luck to you. Uh, if you've done it before, you know what I'm talking about, if you don't, you'll find out soon enough. Uh, it's not an easy task, but it's a labor of love, and it's one that I have, uh, embraced, um, dearly and, and thoroughly enjoyed it. Uh, but more important than that, um, our firefighters, our public works officers, our administrative staff, our, uh, parks and rec, uh, police officers, first responders, everybody, thank you for what you do. Um, a sincere thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do. I've learned that without you, men and women, none of this is possible, and you don't do it for the money, you do it because you love it here and you love the people here, and it's not lost on me, so, uh, a sincere thank you from the bottom of my heart to all of you, and, uh, don't go anywhere, keep doing what you're doing, you make it great, you really do. That's all I have to say. Um, that being said, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into closed session, uh, to discuss the, uh, uh, potential acquisition of some, uh, real property. Per procedure, we'll ask for that closed session, we'll go into closed session, we'll discuss it, we'll come out of closed session with no action, and we'll adjourn, so you're not gonna miss anything fancy, so, uh, thank you all for coming and get home safe. I'll ask for that motion now.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session, potential real property acquisition pursuant to NCGS one four three dash one, uh, three one eight point eleven.
All right, motion's on the floor, all in favor? Aye. All right, we're now in closed session, um, we'll, we'll take five, um, and come back.